My name is Jason Pro, Chairman of the Northborough Board of Selectmen, and I call to order the Monday, June 8th, 2020 meeting of the Board to order. We have some preliminary matter that we have to get through to begin the meeting. So I'll just begin with that. This is an open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen, and one portion will be a public hearing jointly with the Northborough Appropriations Committee. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings. And as, I'm sorry, not to suspend public meetings, to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order is posted at the top of our agenda, which you can find on the town website. Allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public participation. One portion during the public hearing on the revised fiscal year 2021 budget. And the second segment will be the normal public comment. This meeting is being convened by Zoom and is also accessible by other means. As noted on the agenda, there's a live stream YouTube link. There's the Zoom webinar link if you wish to participate in any of the public comment segments. It's on cable access television, government channels, Verizon Channel 30, Charter Channel 192. And you can also dial in phone number with meeting ID and password again, as noted on the, as noted on the agenda. We give further instructions when we reach the public comment sections as to how you would indicate your wish to be, to be heard. The meeting materials that are relevant for this meeting, particularly the revised town budget, are accessible on the town website. On the administration page, left-hand column, you'll see menu items for the June 2nd revised budget update and the June 4th PowerPoint presentation that was presented at last Thursday's joint meeting with Selectmen, K-8 Schools, Appropriations Committee and Financial Planning Committee. You can also look on the Northborough Cable Access Television page. And through their link for, for videos, you can find a video replay of that last Thursday's meeting. The ground rules for the meeting, as Chair, I will walk through the agenda items, introduce the speakers. After the speakers have made their presentation, I will go through the board members for their remarks or comments. I'll ask for your signal at that time if you, if board members wish to speak. Participants in the meeting, please be aware that you're in view of video and you may want to mute your microphone when you're not speaking to suppress any intrusive noise. And I think that will do it for the moment. There will be some number of items that will require a vote by the board. Those votes will be conducted by a roll call. And I think that puts us on our path to begin the meeting. So, the first item, approval of the May 18th, 2020 meeting minutes, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dawn, yes, sir.
I will be approved the May 18th, 2020 meeting minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote, Julianne.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Dawn.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, minutes are approved unanimously. It's now past the hour of 7:00 PM. We have a public hearing to consider an application for a change of ownership as submitted by Wegmans Massachusetts Incorporated for their all-alcoholic beverages package store license for premises located at 9102 through 9104 Shops Way. And for our attendees, do we have our attendee in chief?
I'll promote him, give me a second.
Yep, thank you. And for our public hearing on the all-alcoholic beverages package store license, we have Marielle Cabot representing Wegmans, welcome Marielle.
Thank you. Um, I apparently am not visible, so bear with me.
Sure. Perhaps lower left corner?
Okay. My apologies. All right, could I just go ahead without, without bothering with this? If that's all right, or?
Yes, I think if we're having any kind of technical difficulties like that, we can just proceed. Oh, there you are.
There I am.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So I am here on behalf of Wegmans. The owner, the parent company of Wegmans has been owned by Daniel Wegman, who has held 50.5% of the stock of the parent company and daughter Colleen Wegman. They both took their stock and transferred it to a family estate planning trust. And Daniel, Daniel Wegmans is the sole trustee of that with full power and control over the assets for the benefit of his two daughters and grandchildren. Nothing is changing in the operation of the Wegmans, and this affects eight different licenses in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just so that we understand, what is your relationship or role here?
I'm a paralegal for the attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Joe couldn't be here.
We have a very extensive supplemental package here, application for amendment relating to this, which as far as I understand is in order. Do we have any questions by the board? Leslie, you're out of view, so I don't know if you're interested in having any questions.
Waving my hand, no, I'm all set, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. And with no questions, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I move the board to vote to approve the application for a change in ownership interest as submitted by Wegmans Massachusetts Incorporated for all their alcoholic package store license. But they're all alcoholic package store license premises, 9102 to 9104 Shops Way.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, I may be procedurally amiss here. This is a public hearing.
Yes.
So if any members of the public who are dialed into the meeting here wish to comment, you can, if you're connected through Zoom, you can use the control to raise your hand. I do not see any hands raised, so I think we're complete there. And with that, I'll close the public hearing. We have the motion, we have a second, any discussion by the board members? Hearing none, this is again a roll call vote, Julianne. Leslie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Dawn.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the approval carries unanimously. Marielle, thank you very much, we appreciate your participating tonight.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, good night. It's now past the hour of 7:05, and we have a joint public hearing with the Appropriations Committee. Approval of the revised fiscal year 2021 general fund budget, including Northborough K-8 Schools, Algonquin Regional High School and general government departments. I think I'll begin by turning it to John Codere, the town administrator, to give us a summary. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's, just so for clarification, we're not, we're not approving anything tonight. It's the, it's the approved budget that's moving forward. So the purpose of the public hearing this evening is just to take public comment. So as you know, we had posted the original warrant and budget presentation and hearing that took place with the board on March 23rd. Subsequent to that, you've had an update from me on April 13th. You also had an update regarding the budget specifically at your May 18th meeting. And then most recently, as, as Mr. Chairman, you referred, on June 4th, we had a very extensive joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, Appropriations Committee, Financial Planning and the K-8 School Committee, where we went through the entire budget, the capital budget, as well as the operating budget, and, and provided the boards and committees with all the information they would need in order to move forward. So the purpose of the hearing tonight is really an opportunity for the public to be heard under Section 6-5 of the Town Charter. You're required to have at least one public hearing seven days before town meeting. You've already fulfilled that obligation, but given all the changes that have taken place since the original presentation, it just seemed prudent to schedule another public hearing. Again, the boards and committees have had their presentations moving beyond tonight. Appropriations has a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, at which I anticipate they will vote their recommendations on the K-8 High School, Aspen and general government budgets. And then subsequent to that, on June 15th, the Board of Selectmen then will take up their votes and recommendations regarding the town meeting warrant and the various budget articles. So this is a process that builds financial planning, appropriations, public hearing, then the Board of Selectmen. So I think you all sat through a two and a half riveting presentation. I wouldn't say sat through, I thought it was very informative. Of course, I was the one doing most of the talking. But we, we did an extensive presentation on the revised budget. As the chairman indicated, the budgets are revised budgets, the presentations, as well as the video of that meeting is, are all available on the town administrators, town administration website on the left-hand side, including the most recent document, which is dated June 2nd and was used at the June 4th meeting with regard to all of the budget increases. So essentially where things stand at this point in time, the K-8 school budget is scheduled to increase by 1%. The general government budget is scheduled to increase by, by 1%. The Northborough, or the Algonquin Regional High School budget is increasing 1.5%, the assessment is going up a little over 2%. And we don't anticipate anything's going to change in, with regard to the Aspen Valley assessment at this point in time. So all the information is available on the website. We've done presentations, the superintendent's done his presentations to the K-8 School Committee at Algonquin. The Board of Selectmen had their presentation on the 18th and the general government. And we had a joint meeting on June 4th that covered everything. So really, the purpose of the public hearing tonight is just to allow any members in the, from the public, if they have any comments or that they'd like to make with regard to the budget, before the boards and committees move forward with making their recommendations to town meeting, this would be the appropriate time for that. So I certainly can answer any questions. I just was not going to go through the entire two and a half hour presentation again. Hopefully people have seen it, but I certainly can't answer any questions that maybe specifically anybody has with regard to the budget.
Okay, thank you, John. I will first just ask the Selectmen and Appropriations Committees members, if they have any preliminary comment they'd like to offer. Selectmen, anything you'd like to comment on, please raise your hand. Julianne Hirsch.
Yeah, hi, well, in reviewing the budget, I had one, one question about a small item, which was removing funding for the library that would allow them to keep the expanded hours on Thursday night. And I've been, I've been thinking about this a little bit because it seems that, that if we have to limit the amount of people coming into the library for social distancing purposes, and it, it, won't we need more hours to accommodate the need for the library? In addition, I think a lot of libraries are going to start curbside pickup, and I think that will require more staff. So I'm a little concerned about that one little budget item.
Okay, so through the chair, if I may, well, first of all, the library's open 53 hours a week, so I don't see that as an issue at all. Putting this budget together, you know we made some very difficult decisions. We had to cut over $427,000 out of this budget. We eliminated full-time positions. We cut the Assistant DPW Director position. We cut the full-time facilities manager position. We have reduced several part-time positions, you know. So we've had to make a lot of different, difficult decisions. And as I indicated in the presentation on Thursday, I anticipate fiscal 2022 to be another difficult year. Our budget woes will lag what happens in the private sector. So we're in for two or three years of difficult budgets. Now is not the time to expand services in the one single largest discretionary item that, that we have on, in the budget, and that's the library. The budget's almost $900,000. We made some very difficult cuts. This was an expansion, just to be clear. These, the hours of the library have been the same hours for about a decade now. And so this was a new expansion, just like, just like the facilities manager and some of the other things that we'd like to do were expansions. Now is not the time to expand services in a, in a discretionary, in a discretionary service, in my opinion. So as I said, there's 427,000 cuts, $427,000 worth of cuts that we've had to make, and this was one of them. And honestly, if I were to list out all the priorities of this community, adding that back in wouldn't be on the sheet anywhere. We had to cut a referral service that we were added into the fiscal 21 budget to the Family Services Department to try to help get people, you know, services and counseling that they need. That had to be cut. I would place that way higher than adding expanded hours at a library on Thursday nights. That was a nice-to-have item. And under the budget that we had presented back in March, March 23rd, you know, that was a reasonable expansion of services. But given the fact that we're cutting base services and constraining spending of necessity, I, that would be a, that would be a very extremely low priority, in my opinion.
Thank you, John. Julianne, anything more?
No, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other Selectmen board members? Seeing none, appropriation committee, I'm sorry, Leslie?
Just real quickly, I know we had talked about the OPEB situation on our, at our last meeting. I just want to once again ask about the state and whether or not they have come in with any other additional information, recommendations, waivers, anything like that. Are they changing what they're hoping or making any kind of statement about what they're hoping that communities will do?
Through the chair. So again, OPEB is our other post-employment benefits. And we have a significant liability on the books right now for those benefits. And traditionally or historically for the last several years, we have a $550,000 contribution towards that unfunded liability. So based on the budget constraints, we have eliminated that contribution to the OPEB trust fund in fiscal 21. But to answer your question, Leslie, the state legislature has not taken up OPEB as an issue. They've, that's not even on their, on their agenda to, to do anything with OPEB reform at this point in time.
So in this crisis, though, they're not, they're not making any kind of statement about it.
Well, just again, through the chair, if I may, just keep in mind that, that we're not, currently, we are not any, under any legislative mandate to contribute to OPEB. We are doing it because it's a good financial practice. And if you have an unfunded liability, you want to make sure that you're addressing it. It improves your bond rating and it ensures that you're not creating a large structural deficit in your budget that will materialize down the road. So that's something just through good management and good practice, good financial practices, we're addressing on our own. But there's no mandate that we have to do it. If you don't, don't address it. It will ultimately, when those benefits come due for the retirees, it'll draw a greater percentage of your operating budget on a pay-as-you-go basis, if you haven't put appropriate funding aside. It's no different than pension, but the difference being that pension is heavily regulated and the state did take up pension reform many years ago. So, so we're in good shape there. But we're not under any mandate with regard to OPEB. So we can make a decision on the short term, in the short term, to reduce our OPEB trust fund contribution. And as I stated at length at the meeting on the 4th, it's not a permanent long-term solution. Again, it's like in your private life, if things get difficult financially, you may choose not to put money into your retirement account. That's not a good long-term strategy. You can do it in the short term, but you need to get back on a funding schedule. And I anticipate when we get through this emergency crisis, that we're going to have to get back on a funding plan that's going to have to increase our contributions to get back on track.
Great, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, I was a bit remiss earlier. Normally, we walk through and identify the attendees on the meeting. For this meeting, we have the members of the Board of Selectmen, who we've already run through with prior votes. In addition, we have the Appropriations Committee Vice Chair Rick Nieber and Janice Height and George Brinkel and Anthony Petit, who are connected. For town staff members, we have Town Administrator John Codere, Finance Director Jason Little, DPW Director Scott Sharpentier, Police Chief William Liver and Fire Chief David Parenti, who's also acting as one of our technology specialists this evening to help us run this meeting. As you may note, we're also connected through Northborough Cable Access, and we thank Kathy Dowgliesh and Terry Cream for providing their technical services tonight. Let's see. So with that, I'll turn to the Appropriations Committee. Do you, do you have any comments that you would like to offer at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will turn now to public comment. And I'm just going to walk down the list in order of people here. It does not look like we have anyone connected by phone. Everyone seems to be connected by Zoom. If you would like to offer public comment on the budget, please use the raise hand indicator to let me know you would like to speak. I do see one hand, Mitch Cohen, hold on for just a second. And there you are, Mitch. Could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Mitch Cohen, 12 Whitney Street. I have a question that someone follows up from Julianne's comment earlier. I know that the, I happen to be a member of the Library Trustees. And as a result of the Thursday evening hours cut, there will unfortunately be two part-time personnel who will lose their jobs as a result of that cut. I have, I know there are other positions in the budget that will not be filled. I'm curious what other departments will have conceptual human layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. John, would you address that, please?
Sure, so right now, we're looking at furloughs in several departments, recreation, senior center. We're also looking at potential layoff in the senior center, and we're a layoff in the DPW department. These are part-time positions.
Thank you, John. Mitch, any further comment?
Looks like he's pulled out.
I think he's withdrawn, yeah. Any other members connected through Zoom who would like to comment, please raise your hand. Not seeing any hands. Very well. Let's see. I think with that, we can close the public hearing on the revised fiscal year 2021 budget. Select, I'm sorry.
Mr.
I do have one hand, so. Yes, hold on a second, Scott Rogers. Yes, Scott, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, and sorry for the last minute just question. It was just offered that folks could ask questions via email as well? Did any questions come in via email?
As of 4 o'clock today, we did not receive any.
No questions by email submitted to the town. Anything further, Scott?
No, thank you. I was just hoping that folks would have taken that opportunity to ask their questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, any other members of the public? Raise hand, please, if, if you would like to offer comment at this time. And seeing none, consider the public hearing closed. Members of the Board of Selectmen, any final comments? No further comments? Members of the Appropriations Committee, any further comments? Hearing none, okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Just remind folks that, as mentioned on the town website, you can find links to the documents for the revised fiscal year 2021 budget. Also, the PowerPoint presentation that was presented at the joint meeting of Selectmen, K-8 Schools, Appropriations and Financial Planning that took place on June 4th. And a video replay of that meeting, as lengthy as it is, it would be beneficial to try to review that for a full understanding of the changes that have been made for this proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. And with that, I think we've concluded this item on our agenda. The next item?
The chair, I saw Janice with her hand up.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Janice? Yes, you need to unmute there, George? I'm sorry, you're still muted.
Would the Acting Chair of the Appropriations Committee accept a motion for the Appropriations Committee to adjourn tonight?
Yes, I'd be glad to accept that motion, although we never adjourned to begin with. But if I have a second on that motion, we will adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, all in favor. Tony, are you here? Tony is not here.
Roll call vote.
You have to unmute, Tony.
All right, George Bankle.
Aye. Yes.
Janice Height.
Yes.
And Anthony Petit.
Aye.
All right, all in favor then, I will now adjourn the meeting of the Appropriations Committee.
Thank you very much, Appropriations Committee members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us past the hour of 7:30. We have Jason Little, Finance Director, approval and execution of bonds and bond anticipation notes and approval and execution of advances in lieu of borrowing. Jason, you're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm back here tonight to ask you to execute the required documents related to the $2.43 million reissued bond anticipation notes. And I'm also asking you to approve a $2.12 million advance in lieu of borrowing for the fire station project. If you recall, about a year ago, we were here discussing renewal of a, of another ban, which was very similar. Most of these items are for the same articles as we approved last time. And I got to say that this year, we budgeted for issuance costs at the recommendation of our financial advisor. And we had four qualified bids, whereas last year we had two. We received a net Um, we received a net interest cost of point eight five nine nine, which is a very low interest rate in this, uh, in this, uh, debt climate. And, um, I provided to the board, uh, history of our previous issues. And, uh, as you can see, it's, uh, it's, it's pretty favorable to us. Um, and, uh, next year, um, we will likely be going out to ban again. And hopefully, uh, the conditions will remain similar to this. And that concludes my presentation.
Uh, thank you very much, Jason. If you could, uh, just make, uh, this is just the bands you're, you're explaining at this point?
Um, well, I was mentioning the, uh, the advance in lieu of borrowing. Um, well, an advance in lieu of borrowing is basically what happens before we need to ban for something. And a ban, and I, I should step back and explain that a ban is a bond anticipation note. And that's when we've had a borrowing authorization. And we basically take out a one year loan, which, um, would be payable next year. And, um, it's basically equivalent to, if you had a, a mortgage, this would be like a, an interest only loan where, um, we're eventually going to be, um, issuing long term debt. And, um, prior to that, an advance in lieu of borrowing is when, um, you can lend yourself the money within a fiscal year. So if you haven't, you've outlaid cash yet for a project, you could advance money to yourself. And then later on, um, before the close of a fiscal year, uh, issue debt, e- either in the form of a ban or a bond.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions by the board, please raise a hand. Julian?
Yeah, so Jason, um, the, the second ban that, that for the fire station, that is just so, so I have this clearly in my head, that is for the property purchase, correct?
Um, well, it, it's not solely for the project, property, um, purchase. This is really the balance of what was authorized to be borrowed. This was a three and a half million dollar article. Uh, we funded the rest of it with some transfers from old bond proceeds. So basically, the two point one million dollars is just the balance of the three and a half million dollars. So this makes the article whole for the town to be able to move forward and, and outlay all of the, the cash that was authorized.
Uh huh, and that, that purchase of the property will, is complete? And what are we looking at?
Uh, my understanding is that there's been a, a, a purchase and sale, um, negotiated, although we haven't, um, executed that fully. Uh, and maybe, um, John Codere could, uh, clarify wh- where we are in that process right now.
For true.
But that, that's, but, sorry, John, let me just finish with saying that, uh, that's why we didn't need to issue this in the form of a ban this year, because all of that, the cash that we have within the article was sufficient to close the year without a deficit in the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Right. John? So, so again, so, so we are, um, we, as Jason said, we have a negotiated sale price on the, uh, on the property. We just have to execute the, uh, purchase and sale. The balance of that project, that what you're being, what's being advanced is funding for a pro- owner's project manager, which is required under, under state statute procurement laws for any project over one point four million dollars. So we have to engage an owner's project manager and an architect to move forward. And so, uh, those are two things that should have taken place, oh, about three months ago, uh, two months ago, which did not take place because we've been in the middle of a, uh, pandemic and a crisis. So that's why when we, uh, when we talked about the budget on the fourth, those, uh, anticipated debt service numbers were reduced down because we did not have to, we did not sign those contracts for O P M and, uh, and for the architect prior to the end of the current fiscal year. So we're still going to move forward with those. Um, but, uh, but it doesn't require us to, uh, to issue, uh, debt for that. We'll be able to advance ourselves that money under this, uh, under this, uh, proposal.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Julian, anything further?
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, other members of the board, any, any other questions? Seeing none. Uh, I just observed, uh, in the documentation we received, as you mentioned, Jason, uh, the interest rate on this, uh, for us is, uh, point eight five nine nine percent, which is not quite, but, uh, not quite a point, uh, lower than the last issuance, uh, bans last year in two thousand nineteen. But, uh, um, quite a substantial difference, uh, from last year to this year, an improvement in the rate.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, just, uh, you've, obviously, I'm sure you're all reading the papers. You see the turmoil in the, uh, capital markets and, uh, you know, there's a lot of question in hem and haw. Town's going out, whether or not they can even get somebody to bid. Um, I just, uh, I was just really pleased to see the results. Uh, there's a lot of interest in our, in our bands. And, uh, it just goes to show that we are a, uh, desirable, uh, investment. And so again, everything that we do, that feeds back into our strong financial condition. Um, all the things that we talked about at our meeting, uh, last Thursday, all that factors into, uh, the willingness, A, for people to risk, uh, to, to take a risk and loan us money. And more importantly, um, to see that loan come in at a very, uh, favorable rate. So there, those are both positive things, and I think it speaks, uh, volumes about, uh, the condition of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Jason, uh, anything further?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion, uh, regarding bond anticipation notes?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute municipal bond anticipation notes in the amount of two million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars as presented by finance director Jason.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Julian.
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, carries unanimously. I have a motion concerning advances in lieu of borrowing.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the advances in lieu of borrowing effective July one, twenty twenty in the amount of two million one hundred sixteen thousand five hundred forty eight dollars as presented by finance director Jason.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Julian.
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, carries unanimously. Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as always, uh, for the detail work that goes into all of this, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
That brings us to reports, Julian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so during my report tonight, I'd just like to share some thoughts that I've written down about what we've all been going through in the last weeks and months. So here goes, the last few months have been very difficult for us in Northborough and for people all over the world. After living through the height of the pandemic, we witnessed the horrible murder of George Floyd, which motivated many people to demonstrate peacefully. I learned that on Saturday, Northborough had a large peaceful gathering on the town common. And I want to say that I am proud that I live in a town that is standing up for a more equitable and just society. And I'm thankful that I live in a town where the police department respects us and supports our rights. As a selectman, I can offer this, let's not let the momentum of trying to better our society lose traction. One way to do that is to get involved in your government. And that starts with even the simplest things, like filling out the census and voting in every election. Come to town meeting, get involved with committees, form committees, come to meetings and help us set the agendas and policies for Northborough. Let us know how we can make it easier for you to get involved. One thing I have learned is that answers do not come immediately, but a government service to its community is only as good as the engagement of its constituents. With the participation of every citizen, we can all begin to move forward. I hope this is just the start of a conversation, because our job is that we are here to help. I'd also like to say how wonderful it was to see that our high school students were instrumental in organizing Saturday's event. So very sincere thank you to the young people and all of the others who participated on Saturday. And that basically concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you very much, Julian. Leslie?
Okay, yeah, I echo what Julian said about the, uh, the, uh, peaceful protest. And I, people are still talking about the speeches and they want copies of the speeches. And they want to be able to share them with friends and, and family. I think it's very impressive, and it's also impressive to see that communities around us are doing the same thing. So there is definitely a momentum here, uh, with regard to that, and I hope it continues. Um, I also, as always, I want to continue to thank everyone. I'm not going to go through the giant list that I did last time. But I do want to include, uh, Borough's Cares for Troops and all they have done for our veterans in terms of distributing, uh, needed, uh, supplies to them. Uh, and generally to town administrations, schools, emergency personnel, all the organizations, residents, and town businesses. Uh, it's amazing how much compliance everyone had to go through. And I, I really am proud of Northborough for how we've, uh, handled this whole pandemic. Um, also, I wanted to mention the crosswalk situation, my, my usual thing now that it's nicer out. Um, and actually, people were walking anyway during this, the, the COVID crisis. Um, but now that it's nicer out, there are more people walking, running, biking and so forth. So I just wanted to ask chief if there's any kind of enforcement that can go on, just to be sure that people are complying with that, because people are driving around a little bit more. So I'm seeing some of the same behaviors again at some of the crosswalks. So.
Well, I'm pleased to report to you that we did receive a, uh, grant from the, uh, executive office of public safety and security for enhanced pedestrian and crosswalk safety enforcement, so.
What does that entail exactly?
Uh, that will entail, uh, having extra funds to bring people in on overtime to specifically target certain crosswalks and, uh, uh, bicycle violations. People cutting bicyclists off and things like that.
Okay. Okay, I know someone had mentioned somewhere that they thought maybe the three D crosswalks would work, but I had read an article saying that they didn't seem to make much of a difference.
On what? I'm sorry, I missed that.
The three D, the three D paint or whatever happens when you approach it, it looks like they're kind of jumping up at you.
Other than causing accidents, they don't really have much effect. If you're on a slow road like Northgate, it might stop people, but, uh, you don't want to do that on Route twenty. They're really relegated to, uh, neighborhoods and, and low speed near areas. Uh, they're pretty impressive, uh, you know, I've seen one. But, uh, if people can slam on the brakes real quick when they get there and they realize it looks like that sidewalk is three feet high.
Exactly.
You know, you, you really need to have some warning ahead, but, uh, I imagine they probably have caused more accidents they've prevented.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, I also wanted to wish luck to all the Northborough businesses now that we're in, uh, phase two and all the things that can begin to happen with curbside pickup and outdoor dining and so forth. There's a lot of compliance and work on all these, uh, the parts of all of these businesses. It has to go on, and I just wish them the best of luck. That's a, that's a lot of work and added expense as well. And I wanted to wish congrats and good luck to the class of twenty twenty. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, twenty twenty grads, whether it be, uh, the elementary schools, middle school, high school, St. John's, Assabut Valley Regional, there are a lot of twenty twenty grads around. So I wanted to congratulate all of them. I had the wonderful opportunity to actually witness most of the Algonquin, uh, ceremony yesterday, uh, through, with, uh, my backyard, heard and saw almost, it seemed like about twelve hours worth of it. So a lot of sirens, a lot of honking, and a lot of air horns, and a lot of happiness and joy. Uh, teachers, banners, um, just some really wonderful things going on yesterday. And I think, uh, the superintendent really, and, and principal Walsh, and teachers, just a lot of people, put a lot of effort into, into making this a great thing for, for the Algonquin students in particular. And my last note is the, uh, Northbrook Food Pantry, please check their website and the other website, uh, the Facebook page to see what the needs are currently, because those ends, uh, those needs don't go away. So again, thank you very much, that is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Tim? Uh, you're muted, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd just like to take a, a few minutes to, to talk about the, the Black Lives, uh, movement, uh, Black Lives Matter movement that has been happening in the country and, and in Northborough. Um, but before I start, I'd just like to, to say that, that everything in my statement are my thoughts and my opinions and, uh, do not reflect the board's official position. So just, I just want to make that clear. Um, I just want to give some, some background information that I hope helps explain why I'm commenting on this. Um, in my professional career, I own a business consulting company. And in addition to that, I am the president of a diversity and inclusion consulting firm. Um, we work with companies and organizations of all sizes, um, from a wide variety of industries. Um, I'd name a few of them, but we have strict confidentiality agreements due to the nature of our work. Uh, but you would be surprised that many of our clients are well-known Fortune one hundred companies. Um, the founder of our company, uh, is a woman named Renee Myers. Uh, and she's an expert in diversity and inclusion. Um, she has a TED Talk on unconscious bias that has been viewed more than four million times. And just last night, she was on CNN, taking part in a discussion about the recent, recent events in the, the murder of George Floyd. Um, in October of twenty eighteen, Renee took a role as, um, vice president of inclusion strategy at Netflix. Um, so I've had the chance to, to work and learn from her, um, for almost three years now. And while Renee is an expert, um, I'm not. Uh, I did have a long conversation with her yesterday about making the statement. Um, and she encouraged me to do so. Um, even though I'm not an expert, um, I am passionate about equality. I know that diversity is a strength, and I believe we can become a, a fully inclusive society. Um, with all that being said, um, I would like to applaud all those who took part in the Black Lives Matters protest, uh, the last couple of weeks, um, at the town common. Um, these types of events are important to raise awareness and demonstrate that as a community, uh, we support those that are in dire need of support. And people are in dire need. Um, from my experience working with Renee, I can tell you that the, the issues that people are protesting are real. Um, and they are worse than many people can possibly imagine, and they are disgusting. Change isn't just needed, it is necessary. We are beyond fortunate to live in a community like Northborough. There are communities where people, living, breathing, human beings are shot and killed because they are jogging. They are shot and killed because they are wearing a hoodie and they're out for a walk. And they are, or they're playing with a toy gun in a park. The concerns in our community are if we're, we're going to hold town meeting inside or outside. Whether we're going to move town hall, whether our library is going to be open for extended hours. While these issues are important to us, I do ask that people take some time and reflect and use some perspective on, on what we are facing in our community versus others. I mean, I will be the first to admit that recently I have lost that perspective, and for that, I apologize. Um, this all leads to a question that has been on my mind, and I hope it's been on yours. Um, what can I do? What can I do to make a difference? And I'd like to suggest three actions that we can do as individuals and as a community. Obviously, these aren't the only actions, but suggestions on how to start. First, listen, just simply listen to people who have a different background than you. This is the easiest thing to do, yet it is not happening nearly enough. Listen to learn and listen to ask thoughtful questions. Don't just hear what somebody is saying so you can respond and offer solutions. Listen in order to empathize with that person's lived experiences. What is real to them may not have ever crossed your own path or mind. Don't just hear so that you can tell a story that you think is comparable, because it's not. Listen so you can be guided on how to help. Second, focus on your immediate circle of influence, your family and friends. Do not tolerate any sort of racism, sex. Do not tolerate any sort of racism, sexism, ageism, or any other form of discrimination. It is not acceptable. It is not okay to simply dismiss your racist uncle as an old guy who was set in his ways. If you accept it, people see your acceptance. If you accept it, children see your acceptance. Being complacent is part of the problem. Be an agent of change in your circle. And three, do more than protest. Commit your time to help black or minority organizations. We may not see the problems that other communities see in Northborough, but there are plenty of surrounding communities that need help. Worcester, Springfield, Boston, just to name a few. Reach out to the NAACP, the YMCA, a black church and get involved. Learn about the people. Holding a sign raises awareness. Committing your time feeds change. None of this is easy. We will make mistakes. We will say something dumb. And that's okay if we are trying and we are being authentic. Please don't let the fear of embarrassment or failure stand in our way of getting involved. If we do nothing, nothing changes. Lastly, I'd like to propose that on our next meeting agenda, the Board of Select would vote to approve an official statement regarding our stance on racism. I'd like that statement to include action items that we pledge to take to implement changes so that our town is more diverse and inclusive. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. No report. Okay. So that brings it to me. Tim, Julianne, your sentiments are certainly understood. I was not able to attend this past weekend's event. I did attend the event two weekends ago and I have to say that I was unsure, uncertain what to expect. And I was very pleased with what I saw, what happened. Very peaceful demonstration. The message presented. And certainly, as you've mentioned, Tim, it's not enough to have simply made a gesture. There's more work to do and more commitment to make. So to that end, I'm not sure what format would take, but I would certainly support a statement on on the board's behalf to the community for what stance we would like to take on this. So if you would like to take the lead on that in investigating that or coming up with some suggestions, that would be very helpful.
Yes, I'd be happy to. I'd be honored to.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I would also like to say that I want to congratulate the graduates of 2020. It's been a very atypical year and a lot of a lot of typical celebrations missed, a lot of typical events missed. It's something that none of us could really anticipate and very difficult to try to make things whole for the graduates, but we certainly appreciate their resilience in getting through this year. And we certainly appreciate all the work by the parents and teachers to try to fill this gap under the circumstances, to complete their learning for this year and to try to provide ways in which we could celebrate their achievements. So we'll have a little more to say about that further along in the meeting. And that concludes my report. The next segment will be public comment. Go to the attendees list here. We have a number of people connected through Zoom. If anyone would like to offer some public comment at this time, please use the Zoom mechanism to raise your hand to be recognized. Going once. Going twice. There should be a raise hand control down at the bottom of your panel there that would allow you to indicate to me that you wish to speak. And I do not see any indication. Okay, thank you very much. Onto new business. First item, discussion regarding logistics of the June 22nd, 2020 annual town meeting. John, would you care to start us off on that? And I think we'll be hearing from Scott Sharptier possibly also.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, the time that he's been postponed to June 22nd. There are a lot of logistics involved in that. We did form a group to work on this. Scott Sharptier, a DPW Director was kind enough to volunteer after I volunteered him to lead that group. But working with police, fire, health, and the school department to go over and to look at the logistics of how we would make a town meeting work for us, for us at the high school. And so what we're proposing is the use of the gym and the auditorium space. And I don't want to steal all of Scott's thunder, but I did want to say, you know, I spent two hours on a Zoom meeting with all the managers across the state. And as you can imagine, people are all over the map in terms of town meeting and what they're doing. And some aren't even having town meeting, or at least not now. They're just continuing on a 1/12 budget. But those that are having town meeting, it runs the gamut. Some are having them outside, some are representative town meetings, some are open. But the majority of folks that are having their town meetings outside, they tend to be representative town meeting. And they also have turf fields, which are newer fields. So the big concern I heard from a number of managers across the state is just the, all of trying to control all the unknowns for an outdoor town meeting between the mosquitoes, the weather, the lawn, the ADA compliance. For us, I think we were very lucky that we had a facility that between the gym and the auditorium provides over, almost just short of 4,000 in occupancy of 4,000 people. So we believe that we can, through social distancing, good protocols, procedures, safely hold a town meeting at the high school between the gym and the auditorium. So I'm gonna with that through the chair, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott to talk a little bit about some of the logistics and the things that the committee or the working group has been focused on putting into place to make this a successful town meeting at that location. Scott?
Thank you, John. I'm the chairman. So like John said, you know, we put together a working group to go over the logistics for conducting annual town meeting. Including myself, the town engineer, highway superintendent, building inspector, police lieutenant, fire captain, the school's director of facilities and the school's director of operations, as well as the communication folks. So it's quite a large group of people. We gathered at the high school with the intention of providing as much capacity as we can for voters and staff, but doing so in a twofold safe fashion. We're proposing facial coverings for all attendees as well as a seating layout that provides six-foot safe social distancing in all directions. As John indicated, when you combine the seating arrangements in the gymnasium, which is configured for a graduation and our configuration will be very similar, and you add that to the auditorium, we're over 3,700 people for a maximum occupancy. When you put in the six feet of social distancing, you drop that number down to the 10 to 12% range. We still have substantial availability for voters in both locations. I provided a memorandum in your packets today. I'll go over it briefly. In the gymnasium, we can accommodate seating for 285 voters. That includes adequate wheelchair seating, safe social distancing, and a combination between the bleachers and seedings on the floor. In addition to the 285 voters, we have adequate space in the front of the gymnasium, which is toward where the graduation occurs typically for staff, board members, and dignitary guests such as town council and others. So overall, the gym is going to accommodate approximately 350 people safely. The auditorium, which has a maximum capacity of 850, we can fit safely 89 voters in the auditorium with safe social distancing. It brings our total accommodations for voters to 374. Our five-year rolling average for turnout for town meeting is 256. So again, we're providing seating for 374, well in excess of our average. In the past, we've only had one year that exceeded that 374. And that was in 2016 when we had White Cliffs in the Town Common on, the very, both very popular articles. Even the Lincoln Street School, dead exclusion, only drew 355 voters. So we have a firm number that I'm comfortable with going forward for town meeting. A couple of the protocols that are being implemented outside of the voting process is getting the residents into the facility safely. So instead of pulling in the front entrance, parking and walking through the rotundum, the entrance will be in the back because the gymnasium is the primary seating. When you park in the back, you see the bump up where the gym is. The doors to the sides of the gym lead into long hallways that run up in parallel the gym. Those long hallways will be demarked with six-foot tapes for proper social distancing. At the ends of those hallways, there'll be three voter check-in locations at each hallway. So we're gonna have three at each entrance point. So we'll have six total voter check-ins. The town clerk has rolled out iPads for voter check-in, which will allow each station to accommodate the full alphabet. There'll be space six feet apart. I believe it's going to be a much more efficient entry process to get our voters into the gymnasium or auditorium for voting. Regarding the dissemination of materials, the written materials, as we all know, at the beginning of town meeting outside the auditorium, we had the tables set up and that was a congregating point. We're going to utilize those hallways with the six-foot queuing as the distribution points for the town meeting paperwork that everybody will be picking up. So we have a good plan going forward to keep people safe. Like I do, I've been a civil engineer, everything is safety for us and then we'll do safety twice. It's a belt and suspenders approach, facial coverings for everyone, safe social distancing for everyone. It's a good plan. It's well thought out. It takes a lot to implement. Spacing out the chairs on the gym floor adequately spaced. You know, there's gonna be a lot of tape out there. There's gonna be tape on seats. There's gonna be tape on floors. There's gonna be tape on walls. But it's gonna be logical and easily followed by the voters. I want to thank everybody who's, you know, the school, the communications folks, the egress, you know, the captain, the building inspector. It's been a huge help. No one person could have done it together alone. So it's come together nicely.
Thank you very much, Scott. Obviously, very complicated thing to try to plan and try to get all the details down. Do you have a sense of when we would have something available, perhaps posted on the town website or in other medium that would kind of describe the process for an attendee at town meeting? How should they approach the site? Where should they park? What avenue should they take to enter the building and everything like that? Will we have instructions to guide people on how to arrive and get themselves seated?
Yes, my expectation is at the beginning of the week, next week, which is the week before town meeting occurs, you know, June 15th. We can have a site plan that shows the traffic path to go in and as well as the pedestrian path from the parking area to get into the voting queues.
Great. Thank you. Board members, any questions? Leslie?
Okay, Scott, thank you very much. I know that sounds like it was a big committee and a lot of work and a lot of you know, a lot of detail that had to happen here. I have a question and I have a comment. Question is, what is the latest as far as what the state is saying in terms of gathering and the limit on the amount of people that can be in a space? And does that apply to us? Have I missed something here?
John, you may want to touch base on that relevant to the body we were referring to.
To the chair, if I may. So there was a lot of confusion out there for a period of time. And I'll admit, I was in unclear on that. We've had several Zoom conference calls of Lieutenant Governor clarifying that legislative bodies are exempt from the restrictions on gatherings. So it comes down to a town finding a venue and a process and a procedure whereby, again, the community feels comfortable proceeding with a, with a town meeting. And so for some communities, that's an event outside of their facilities are ADA compliant and accessible and they could do it. For others like us, we benefit from having a very large regional high school in our backyard that has this indoor space that allows us to spread out people in a safe manner. But the bottom line is that towns are moving forward. There is an exemption for town meetings and and you're starting to see a number of communities that are proceeding with their, holding their legislative bodies. Most often, or more often than not, the communities that you're seeing not proceed with town meeting, they're doing so for financial reasons more than anything else. They really can't put a budget together without knowing what the state aid and the federal relief funds might look like. So they're just holding off. But the bottom line is we're all gonna have to hold town meetings. You're gonna have to hold town meeting now and/or probably in the fall. And so like in our case, so on this Zoom meeting that I had, talking to some of the, some of the other towns, you know, the things that people were most concerned with is in the fall, if you have a fall town meeting, which I think a number of communities are going to need one in order to rebalance the budget once they get more information. But once you get into October, you know, you're into snowstorms and ice storms, really cold weather, if not cold weather, mosquitoes, darkness, all that type of stuff. So it behooves us, I think, to find and to work out the kinks for an indoor town meeting. As I said, we're, you know, the capacity is 3,700. That's the occupancy. We're talking about using a little more than 10% of that to be able to social distance folks. I mean, just think about that auditorium. You know, it's 850 people and we're talking about, you know, using that to bring in no more than about 80 folks. So we can, we can make this work. Again, if we don't do it now, we're gonna have to do it in the fall regardless. And depending on how things go, although there was some very promising information regarding a vaccine in the news recently. But there's a good chance we're gonna be, you know, in this same situation come spring town meeting next year. So we need to figure this out, basically.
Okay. I just want to make a comment too. Thank you, John. I'm probably in the minority here, but I just wanted to go on the record saying I'm very uncomfortable actually with the thought of attending a town meeting inside. You know, I've done such a good job of staying at home and hunkering down. It's hard for me to imagine actually going into a building all of a sudden with a lot of people. So, you know, again, I'm probably in the minority, but I did want to go on the record as saying that I have a little discomfort about, about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Dawn? Unmute?
I want to kind of back forward, Leslie. Dawn, you froze. Just said, I also have discomfort. We all keep freezing. Idea of 374 sounds like we probably won't reach that many people. But should we reach that many people? Do we have a backup plan on using the music room or something like that?
We've, through the chair, we've discussed using the other gym as overflow directly opposite the entrance to the auditorium. But oddly enough, you know, that's not, the concern is the other way, getting, obtaining and maintaining a quorum to get the business of the town done. That's been the biggest focus and concern in other communities is, you know, making sure we get enough folks there as a quorum. There's some legislation that recently passed, was signed by the governor yesterday or the day before regarding adjustment of quorums, but Regarding adjustment of quorums, but, but again, we, we think, we think we'll get, uh, a quorum. And I don't think you're gonna get four hundred people. Uh, that just, the data again from. The past six or seven years, we're, we're not anywhere near that and, uh, there's nothing on the agenda. Uh, there's no major building projects, no, uh, controversial, um, bylaws or anything of that. Uh, the other thing is, um, as far as the board's discussion tonight, I, I am hopeful at some point, you know, I'd like to have a little discussion about. Possibly paring back the warrant because that's the other thing that folks are, uh, in other communities are doing. Is they're just dropping the warrant articles back to the key financial, uh, articles and things that, that can't wait with the assumption that you'll. More than likely have a fall town meeting. So you can reduce the number of time, uh, that people are, 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 uh, at in attending town meeting. And if you can do that, you can, you know, potentially get in and out of town meeting in, in under a couple of hours and get the core business of the town. You know, uh, taken care of. So. Um, I understand everybody has, uh, hesitations. It, it sort of is what it is. Um, but again, with everybody wearing masks and I think we have the benefit of this rather large indoor space. Where people can be, uh, can be spaced out. Um, there are other communities that are having and moving forward with town meetings. Where they're leaving a chair in between, you know, every other person. We're talking about, you know, laying out six feet. Of, uh, clear space around, uh, around each seat. So. It, it, uh, you know, it is what it is unfortunately.
Just to give a, a little description.
Yeah, go ahead.
A quick description of what the seating looks like in the, in the bleachers. It's, um, four empty seats between bodies and then two empty rows between rows. Um, so there is no, nobody's, you know, elbow to elbow, um, in the seating and the seating arrangements will be very clear. Uh, with signage on where to sit and tape off, taping off locations where not to sit. So we're doing what we can to make it very clear in that, you know, the six foot is shoulder, shoulder. Um, not, you know, center of seat to center of seat. So we were very conservative in our layouts. When in doubt, you know, we rounded out.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, yes, Dawn. Uh, you have to unmute, Dawn.
Anybody else have problems with everybody keeps freezing?
Just your connection seems to be the difficult one, Dawn.
Perhaps while we await Dawn's reconnection, we could go to Tim. Tim, you had a hand up for question or comment?
You all froze again. Um, comment slash question. I, I think, um, I agree with, with, um. Leslie and I, I think everybody's gonna have some concern if you've, if you've taken. Um, the virus seriously. I think everybody's gonna have a concern. Um, about meeting in a, in a, a public setting. Um, is there anything that we can do so that people can email questions in or participate remotely?
No, there, through the chair, if I may, uh, there, there is some provisions. Again, it's, it's the form of government that we have. Uh, it has its, it has its benefits and it has a lot of drawbacks as well. And, uh, so the, the legislation provided for remote participation if you have a representative, uh, town meeting, which we don't. We have an open town meeting. So there is no legislation, uh, that would allow us to do anything like that. And logistically, I'm not sure how something like that could possibly work. So. So the short answer on that is no.
Okay. Do you know if there's any discussion at the state level about making any changes of that just because of everything that we're going through?
They just passed this legislation that allows remote participation for, uh, representative town meetings. Uh, I don't think anybody can conceive of a way to do this for open town meeting. So no. So anybody with an open town meeting is generally, they're proceeding. Um, either now or they will have to proceed in a matter of a couple of months. And the thing to keep in mind is that, you know, you, you're gonna have to have a town meeting either, either now or in a couple of months. And materially, I'm not sure what, what will have changed. So. You know, a, a, again, I'm, I'm just delivering the news as it is.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, I do.
Yeah. Nobody, if you wanna change to a council manager form of government, we'll have a very good discussion about that, but.
Um, I do have one other question. Um. If we were to push off some of the warrants, what steps do we need to take in order to do that? Is that something we could do at our next meeting? Um, is that something that we need to do beforehand? I'm just curious about the, the process for doing that.
Yeah, I, through the chair, I think the first thing to do would be, you know, to contact the, the border committees that really sponsored the articles. It's a border selectman's warrant, so it's your warrant. But, um, but I think you'd wanna have conversations with some of the other committee. I mean, the, the thing that comes to immediate mind is the, uh, other zoning articles. You know, that there, those could be postponed to a fall town meeting. Uh, there's an argument whether or not they're, they're time sensitive. Uh, but what you're seeing a number of communities do in order to, to get the warrant into more manageable, they're postponing things like zoning. Uh, and they are looking at the possibility of a, of a, uh, consent agenda. Where you collapse a bunch of articles together. And again, we'd have to work with the moderator on this and, uh, and you vote. All the articles in a block to move things along. And if, uh, town meeting doesn't consent to that, they pull the article out and you take it up. I mean, you could get a consent article to put all the budget articles together. Um, you could put a consent article to do all of the community preservation projects potentially together. And then you can postpone a number of other, uh, another, a number of other things, particularly things that will draw a lot of. You know, a lot of discussion or debate that aren't necessarily or arguably time sensitive. So those would be things that I would, you know, I'd recommend that we, we explore doing that. But the first would be to communicate to the, to the other boards and committees, like the planning board, uh, of the request that you would like them to, uh. Be willing to, to pass over these articles, uh, for this town meeting, uh, to take them up at a subsequent one.
Uh, I had been thinking along that, that line, uh, in terms of consent agendas. There are two things we're trying to do here. One is to maximize the distance of the attendees and the other one would be to minimize the duration of time for the meeting to take place. Uh, and so toward that end, trying to, uh, combine articles into a single vote to expedite things. Um, to defer articles that aren't necessary to do at this time. Um, are two things that we could, uh, could, uh, consider. Um, in the interest of reducing the duration of town meeting and taking care of the. The business that has to be included, which is predominantly the, the town budget and the finance articles. Uh, to get us into this next fiscal year. So, uh, with that, I'll certainly, uh. Take the action item to contact other boards and committees that are sponsoring, uh, articles and, uh, inquire about their. Consideration or willingness to potentially postpone, uh, articles. Uh, or to, you know, consider consolidating articles, uh, um, so that we can, uh. Try to, uh, be as efficient as we can with our time and our exposure. Uh, and, um, get the business conducted in, in, uh, in the quickest way possible. Dawn, did you have another question or comment you wanted to add? No? Okay, uh, John?
So, uh, one other thing that we can do, uh, again, this is, uh, what a number of communities are doing is, um. Uh, proceed, no PowerPoint presentations. Everything's in a handout and, uh, and limit the presentations themselves. Um, so that folks, again, if you're minimizing things down to, you know, finance and budget articles. Um, we can point people to, as we discussed tonight. The, uh, the online discussions and, uh, presentations on the budgets. Everything's done through handouts, um, based on the logistics between the gym and the auditorium. More than likely unless we wanna pay a pretty hefty bill for renting the technology. Um, it would probably be best that we, that we forego, uh, you know, the, uh, overhead PowerPoint presentations. And again, refer to the handouts and keep things, uh, relatively, it's simple and straightforward.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, Julianne?
Yes, uh, so this question is for Scott actually. Um, what, what is the ventilation system like in the gymnasium? Is there air conditioning or?
No, there's no air conditioning. They have windows. They'll, they'll open the windows in the evening to let the cool air in and that's, that's it.
And, and no fans?
I don't know how well fans would work. Um.
Actually, I'm asking about fans because I think that there's some, there. I, I, I'm not speaking as a healthcare professional, but I think there's some evidence about fans blowing. You know, blowing air a certain way and, um, people downstream of the, of the, um, giraffe. It being, being a little more sus- susceptible to get, catching the virus if the virus is there. So I, I do have to say that I'm, um. I, 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 I echo Leslie's concerns also. You know, we. It's two weeks before town meeting and we're still meeting on Zoom and then suddenly we're gonna be in with possibly hundreds of people and. Um, I don't know, I, I just, I just, in my head, I wonder if we shouldn't just postpone it even another month. And, and then be able to do the whole town meeting or, um. Because one of the other things I'm thinking about right now is for those folks who are sitting in the bleachers. That's not the most comfortable place to sit for potentially four hours. I, I mean, I, I, I should back up completely and say, I, I applaud you for all of the details that you've thought of. It sounds like you've thought of every single thing. But, um, if there's any way we could, we could move to postponing it so we can do it all together. Move it off one more month, um, when we have more evidence of how the virus is going. I, I'm, I have some concerns. So. That's, that's my statement.
Thank you, Julianne. Uh, Leslie?
Yeah, now that I, I feel a little, uh, um. Quite sure what the word is I'm looking for here, but, uh, empowered, I guess, by the fact that Tim and Julianne also chimed in a bit. Um, you know, I hesitate to say something, but I, I definitely am not comfortable. I, I. Again, we, we've all been kind of, you know, doing this isolation thing and I almost feel like we're just a smidge too premature to all of a sudden be meeting with. With other people in, in a venue like that. Uh, so again, I am not comfortable with that right now. Uh, the other thing is, having been to several, uh, graduations in the high school. Um, gym, it gets really hot in there. And I was going to say what Julianne said, which is I don't recommend fans, however, I think that would make people even more nervous. I think there'll be people who really, really wanna be able to attend town meeting and do their, do their thing and, and do their part. But are going to have some misgivings. Not that July isn't going to be hot too, but. Again, I would not be comfortable if I walked in and there were fans going on. So. Um, I know they used to have to pump air into the gym. I know that happened for one of my kids' graduations because it got so hot. Jason, I think you were probably there as well on one of those.
Yep.
It was horrendous, um, especially if you're sitting, sitting up high. So, uh, you know, there's really not a whole lot that can be done about that. And I don't think the use of fans is, is something I'd be comfortable with. But I just do wanna reiterate that I do have a level of discomfort about this right now. So I know things need to happen. I understand that, but I don't wanna force. An issue that I think that some people have some discomfort on and are not going to attend because they're still nervous.
Thank you. Just, just a, just a couple, through a chair, a couple of points. Um, as a, as a father of a recent graduate. Um, there's a big difference when that gym is at capacity with almost twenty-nine hundred people in it. Versus what we're talking about, number one. Number two, um, you know, we have had, uh, town meetings in that gym on multiple occasions. And, uh, so as far as the, the venue, um, you know. I, I view uncomfortable seats as a positive thing if you wanna get people moving along. Um, but, uh, but in all seriousness, I mean, it, it is what it is. We're talking about getting probably in all likelihood, less than a couple hundred people. Into the space for, for a short period of time to, to do the business of town. You know, having said that, I'm just. We're, we're just laying out for you what the, what the options are. And so, uh, if you choose not to have a town meeting or if the moderator chooses. Uh, to postpone town meeting in consultation with the board. Then we're gonna just, we're gonna continue to, to bump it off, but you're gonna have to have a town meeting at some point. And this is the, this is the venue to do it. Uh, but if you think that, uh, some, if you think there's more information to come regarding the virus or, or, um. You know, that something's going to happen on that front, uh, which is possible, I guess, uh, then we can, you know, we can postpone. Uh, it's certainly in the purview of the moderator and the board to not hold a town meeting, uh, for, for right now. Uh, but, but again, uh, as you get into the fall, uh, outside becomes even more difficult and problematic than what we have, uh, currently. And, um, uh, the, the, the idea of, uh. Of not scaling back town meeting, uh, to just a couple of, to, to a limited amount of key, uh, budgets. I, I think that would be difficult to get people to come to a, a multi-night town meeting. Um, but that's just my thought. So, it's up to the board. You can let the staff, let us know what you'd like to do or what you'd like to communicate with, uh, the moderator, but. Uh, we do have what we believe is a viable plan to hold town meeting indoors, but, uh, it's certainly up to the board.
Thank you, John. Scott?
Yeah, we, there's, there's the, um, the, the old gym also available. Uh, we have not included that. I did not include that in our counts, nor in a layout. Um, it's directly across the hall from the gym we're talking about. Now, again, if we're in that two hundred, two hundred and fifty voter range. And we have three large venues that can accommodate, um, that group divided up. There can be a substantial social distancing to the tune of ten, fifteen feet, um, between people. It's, uh, there's adequate space there, I, I would, I would think for, um, ex- extensive, uh, distancing. John mentioned other communities, uh, having their town meetings, you know, outdoors, um, at, at fields. Some of those fields are, are quite a bit different from, from, from ours. You know, the, the community I live in has a relatively new synthetic turf field. Even the walking trail is, uh, walking track is, is, is handicap accessible. The field is handicap accessible. So a coach in a wheelchair can get on the sidelines. You know, our high school field is quite a bit older than that. So those, those accommodations aren't necessarily there, uh, for us. So I, I think. In the three venue scenario, um, primary gymnasium, auditorium and, and older gymnasium. There can be substantial social distancing. And more specifically for those that maybe feel like they need more than just the six feet. So just more food for thought.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Uh, any other comments by board members? Julianne?
So, um, so, so Scott, what you're saying right now is that you're, you would consider opening up, uh, the other gym. Um, so I'd like to hear from my other select board members about, that, I mean, that sounds, that sounds, uh, you know. Um, as a much more positive thing, but, but before we do that, um. So if family members come, do family members have to be six feet apart?
No, no. So, so again, if, if, if a husband and wife come together, they can, they can sit together. So that would reduce the, again, the space that's needed as well.
Right, right. So.
A lot of factors involved, so, uh, yes, I, I. I think there are a lot of complications here. Uh, we have the complication of, um. Of the venue in terms of potentially its climate control. Um, I think from what I've heard tonight, I'm comfortable with the distancing aspects that have been presented. Um, and if we can further increase that. Uh, and if we can further increase that distancing through the use of the old gymnasium in addition to the new gym and the auditorium. Uh, if that makes people more comfortable, uh, then I certainly would be fine with, you know, uh, taking that step. To provide uh more adequate, you know, greater distancing if that makes people more comfortable and more willing to participate. Um, in what we're doing. I'm uncertain about, say, as you suggested, Julianne, the, the deferral for another month because. I can't imagine the weather conditions in July are gonna be any more favorable than what we're looking at for, for late June. Uh, um, so from that perspective, if people are uh, are dissuaded from attending. For reasons of personal comfort during the meeting, uh, then I don't think July is gonna be an improvement over what we're gonna, gonna see in, in June. Um, and as we said also, uh, there are measures we can take and consider to. That I feel we should take to um. Make the whole process more efficient in terms of consent agendas and deferred items and shorten the meeting time. Uh, I would like to think that with the proper action in that regard, it would be a single night, a single meeting. And we would have all the necessary business concluded uh, uh, going into the new fiscal year, so. Uh, I certainly understand everyone else's. Discomfort potentially with the, the circumstances and uh, and everything and everyone, I think, has to make their own personal decision. As to whether they feel comfortable enough to be participating. I, speaking for myself, I feel. Comfortable enough based on uh, the way I've conducted myself through these last several months. And with the plans uh that are, that are in process now to try to provide adequate safety measures for everyone to be able to participate. That's, that's where I stand on it. John?
Uh, it just, just one comment from, from my perspective of staff. Uh, I think the decision is we have a town meeting now. Or we have a town meeting sometime in the late fall. Postponing it by a month, it makes no sense to me logistically. It, it, you'll have to under the legislation postpone it on a monthly basis, but I think we need to, you need to tell folks, what are we doing? So, you know, uh, because otherwise we're gonna be going through and wringing our hands every two weeks, which doesn't. We need to move on with, with the rest of the, uh, you know, the business of the town. So either we have the town meeting or we postpone it to the fall, but to postpone it a month uh or two doesn't make. I don't know what that gets you. Um, I think you, most towns are either doing it or they're waiting to sometime in the fall. Um, and that's kind of the, the two that we're seeing.
Julianne?
Can anyone um give me any information about what the high school is doing? Is there, is there some sort of graduation event planned for July?
I understand that there's a tentative plan uh sometime in late July to. To possibly hold a in-person graduation with some kind of distancing requirements. Um, I'm not sure whether that's expected to be an indoor or an outdoor event. I'm sorry, Leslie?
I believe it's outside and I think it's July thirty.
So, 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 huh, uh, just, you know, just because I'm, um, I'm very. You know, very cautious about making sure everything is handicapped accessible and um. And, you know, everyone gets to, gets to attend. How is the, how is the high school doing, uh, doing it outside?
I don't think anyone knows at this point. I think it's a tentative plan. Um, it's a work in progress and how they. Uh, cope with some of those potential challenges. I don't think we have that information at this time. I mean, it's an independent event.
Yeah, but, but it's a, it's a model that we could maybe tag on to, so.
Uh, is the board interested in looking at an outdoor town meeting?
Well, outdoors is, is safer, right?
Speaking for myself, I'm, I'm fine with an indoor meeting.
Uh, uh, again, I'm, I'm not trying to push the board in any direction, just so I'm clear. It's just the, the situation is what it is. We're trying to offer you the, the options that we see in the. In the, in the best way to proceed, so.
There are challenges at the high school field for conducting town meeting.
Leslie?
Um, okay, Scott, if we use the other gym, which I call the gymnastics gym, the wrestling gym, maybe. Um, there would be no issue with microphones and anyone feeling like they wouldn't be able to hear anything going on.
Correct. The plan we have currently accommodates uh the. Primary gymnasium as the home of operations. The auditorium as the um annex with full two-way communication between both. So residents in the auditorium have microphones and uh an assistant moderator to assist them. They have full um exposure to what's being presented um audibly in the gymnasium. The same protocols would be implemented across the hall with far less cable. And we would utilize the same seating pattern. So the seating pattern we've used, you know, like I said earlier, it's six-foot social distancing. We have um a seven and a half foot uh seating circles, so that accommodates your eighteen-inch seat. That's, that's normal, that's a normal-sized seat. So it's, we would have the same matrix uh laid on the. Old gymnasium's floor and have a count there. I can see that gymnasium fitting eighty to a hundred people, safe distance.
Uh, so. I guess there are a couple of things to do here. Um, we will be meeting again next week on June fifteenth. At that time, uh, we can kind of take stock and see, uh, see where we are. Uh, in the meantime. Uh, Scott, if I could ask, um. Uh, perhaps come up with a alternate proposal uh for, for seating and distancing that would uh. Uh, perhaps uh increase uh the distancing aspect. Um, meanwhile, uh, working on another uh. Uh, avenue, uh, we can. Uh, do a little bit more to investigate uh um the possibility of consent agendas or deferral of. Uh, uh warrant articles uh to a fall town meeting and uh work toward. Ensuring, you know, a comparatively brief uh and single day, single night uh town meeting. Basically maximizing distance and minimizing time. Uh, that would be my suggestion to the board. Uh, any other questions or comments, Leslie?
Yeah, um, you know. If there's gonna be a town meeting, I, I, I am going to go. I, I'm not going to not go to it. Um, because that's my civic duty. I do think that health is, is of primary importance and I think that if we're going to have one. What would make me most comfortable is knowing for sure that we're using the auditorium and both gyms, no question, not maybe. That we are. Um, I know it's more work to set up the cables and the microphones and make sure every, everything's working. Um, that the doors are all open, that they've been open for a while to get fresh air in there, uh, no fans and that there is. What's the other thing I was thinking about? Well, just as little that people have to touch is possible. The people aren't touching the same piles of paper or the same place on an iPad, you know, all those kinds of things. We need to make sure all those things are decreased. I think we need to make sure people know that upfront. Uh, that we're doing everything we can to make sure that they're comfortable coming in and that they shouldn't have to question coming in. Um, but if they know that it's, the distance between everyone is much greater than six feet. Um, then I think that people will have some comfort in coming in, because we don't wanna feel like we are having something. And people feel deterred from coming.
Through the chair, if I just may, I mean, this is the, this is the same conversation that's taking place across the entire Commonwealth. So again, there's nothing unique to us. Everybody's struggling with this, um, and we wanna do, you know, we're trying to keep everybody safe. But unfortunately, based on our form of government, we do, you know, we do need to conduct the, the business of the town, so that's. It's just a, it's a tough, it's a tough spot everybody's in at the moment, so.
Thank you, John. Uh, any more comment or questions at this time? Here and none. Uh. So for next week then, we will uh. Basically get an update. We'll have perhaps an updated floor plan uh to uh, to have greater distancing. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Um, we will have worked toward uh trying to have a, a reasonable proposed uh. Structuring of the warrant in terms of consent agendas or deferred articles. And see where we are at this time next week and what we can reasonably anticipate for how town meeting would be conducted if we do proceed with it.
And a suggestion through the chair, if I may, uh, we should probably invite the moderator to the meeting to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yes.
I mean, we are communicating with him, but um. He should be at the meeting, so if we're gonna make a decision, it's really the moderator that decides. With, after consultation with the board, but ultimately it's the moderator who decides, so.
Very good. Um, Leslie?
I'm sorry, I just have one more question too. Um, and Scott, I, I apologize if you already uh mentioned this, but. People will be coming in through the back doors, what I call the sports parking lot. Um, did you say that there would, would there be markings on the ground so people aren't kind of throwing around the doorway?
Yes, we'll have the, the three check-in tables down along each corridor will be socially distanced. From there, there'll be six-foot demarcations on the floors for the queue. And there'll be tables for uh paper, um, uh, the, the handouts. Those will also be distanced, so people aren't congregating in any one location. There'll be hand sanitizer available um throughout the facility. And, and again, it's, it's important to, to, to understand, you know, we, we'll have masks there as well. Where we're promoting facial coverings and social distancing. You know, it is a belt and suspenders. A lot of communities are doing one or the other. Um, we're promoting both so that everybody is safe. When they're in the hallway six feet apart, they're gonna have a mask on when they're sitting at their voting, voting seat. They'll have a mask on and they'll be six feet away, so uh we've, we've structured this with, with safety in mind.
Okay, I, yeah. That sounds great.
Uh, Leslie, you had something else? Yep.
Yeah, actually, a, a question just popped up on my, my screen. Um, if there is a revised warrant, when would that be visible to residents? If things are consolidated a bit?
Yes, I mean, that's something that we would be making some decisions on at our meeting next week, so it would really be the. The week leading up to this currently scheduled town meeting on the twenty-second, that some of that would be more fully formed and people would understand how. Uh, the, the expected structure would, would be.
Okay.
Uh, anything else? Okay, thank you all. Uh, next item, discussion approval of process for outside dining applications. John?
Sure, so um, as you're all probably aware, under the governor's order number thirty-five, uh, regarding the phase-two reopening. Um, of the economy includes uh some provisions to allow restaurants the opportunity to expand their uh. Premises to include outdoor seating, so this poses a number of issues. Uh, things are moving quickly, so the governor released this information. Uh, and then a week later, um, you know, we're supposed to figure out how to make all this work. So uh, under the um, under the governor's uh order. A number of items are waived, so things like uh, you know, butter for notification, public hearings, things of that uh nature. Are waived under uh the process. The goal that the governor is really bringing forward is he wants to get the restaurants open. As quickly and as painlessly as they can to get them open with some outdoor seating so they can start serving folks. Uh, and hopefully keep a, a toehold on, on staying in business. So the issue is, um, in order to move this quickly, what the governor's um order is sort of envisioning. Is that this would be delegated to the staff so that it wouldn't require uh. Every, every restaurant who is uh interested in doing this having to come before uh the board of selection. So what we did, um, and in your packet is a draft of a policy. That would essentially um allow the staff to um approve these outdoor seating. Basically an alteration of premises, uh, but would allow this to be uh, to be taken up. Uh, you, between the police, fire, um, and Board of Health and the building inspector. Uh, so we have drafted again for you the, the rules and uh, and the policy of how this would work. Um, it would require obviously approval by all the departments that I just, uh, I just stated. Keep in mind, when uh, when there's ever an alteration of premises. Um, the normal process is for staff to go through all this review and then we ultimately make a recommendation to the board. Uh, with regard to those alterations. Um, this is a temporary situation, though. It expires on uh November first or. Earlier if the governor uh rescinds his uh, his order. So um, they have to follow uh the um guidance. And the requirements uh for uh restaurants in terms of outdoor seating, the number of seats. The locations, uh, all of that. They have to meet all those self-certification uh checklist in order to, to be open. Um, the outdoor seating, uh. Uh, if you have an existing outdoor patio that's approved, they can be using those uh right away without any additional approval. Other than meeting the reduced occupancy uh that's uh laid out in the requirements. Let me see. Uh, there's no outdoor entertainment unless you already have an existing outdoor uh, uh permit. That includes uh entertainment. Um, place, areas need to be designated. They have to either be able to monitor uh the area from inside. Uh, directly or assign staff outside to uh, to keep uh, uh, control of the. Uh, outdoor seating area, has to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act uh in the Architectural Act for, Access Board requirements for. Accessibility. And uh, and then we would need to notify the uh. Uh, the ABCC with regard to any modification to their premises. So normally the process would require, after the board does its work. To send it to the uh, to the eight, the Alcoholic uh Beverages Control Commission, the ABCC, to approve this. So, but the governor's uh approach is to um, to try to waive all those things and really the bottom line here is. Uh, trying to get these uh restaurants that have been struggling, as we all know, to be able to serve. Food and alcohol outside safely and effectively uh meeting uh the various uh criteria. And to prevent uh this from being what is typically, you know, a four to six-week process. We're talking about trying to turn these things over in a matter of a couple of days. And so uh, you know, they're required to provide uh site plan um or layouts. Um, and uh, all the information that uh building inspector, public safety, uh, and my office would require to, to approve these. Now, uh, this is a suggestion. This is what most communities are doing. Uh, the alternative is if you don't uh go down this path, adopt this policy to delegate it to staff. Then it would require the board holding, you know, public hearings, not public hearings, but public meetings to approve. Uh, these alterations of, of premises. I imagine you'd have to have a meeting in minimally once a week if you wanna be responsive to uh, to the restaurants. So um, so again, we put this together. It was uh drafted and reviewed back and forth with town council. Uh, today it's staff met again. We have an application uh process. And essentially what we do is if the board's in favor of this uh approach. We would email out the policy, the application forms to all of our restaurants and common vixeler licensee holders. Uh, either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning and essentially, we, we're getting calls already uh from them. Uh, started, uh, started this morning uh with, uh, can I do this? Can I do that? Uh, with uh, can I do this, can I do that, and what's the process? So, uh, we would get this out to them uh at, at the latest tomorrow morning and then uh through the balance of the week. Uh, just try to approve uh and start working with them and giving them the proper guidance to, to get open with the outdoor seating if that's something they're interested in. So again, uh, we're trying to meet the spirit of what the um, the governor's trying to accomplish here. Uh, the only way you're gonna meet that spirit uh is to either hold a lot of board of selectmen meetings in frequent succession to. Uh, to be responsive to these uh restaurants or to delegate it to the staff and allow us uh based on all the criteria that we use. To approve these things or recommend these things to you normally at a selectmen's meeting, but just allow us to do it as staff. Once it completed, uh, the uh, the information would be forwarded to the board as well as the ABCC. Um, we did get that with some controversy uh in the beginning about whether or not. The alcoholic beverages would be part of that, we did get some late Friday. Uh, we did get some guidance from the ABCC that yes, uh, they are uh comfortable with this all being delegated. Of uh, on a temporary basis um to get these restaurants up and running, so that's the policy that we put together uh for your consideration tonight. Happy to answer any questions uh that the board may have, but, but again, we're just trying to, really, we're just trying to um. Help the businesses uh get moving on this initiative, this phase two as quickly as we can as a community, so that they can start um, you know, uh. Serving folks outdoors and uh, and hopefully start generating some, some income for themselves so they can stay in business. So it's a really, the bottom line on this is an attempt to be responsive and uh to get the businesses um moving as quickly as we can. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, John. Um, and to repeat uh, um, along with this policy here is a um waiver of the one hundred, what would otherwise be the one hundred and fifty-dollar application fee. For this kind of uh modification, so we're trying to uh make it as accommodating as possible uh in doing this. Uh, questions from the board, Leslie?
Yeah, I thank you, this is a, I like this policy, it is, seems to be comprehensive and I like, I, I just like the spirit of it. And I think that, you know, waiving the fees and uh, I think eliminating the need to come before us for every single time, I think is, would be a headache for everyone involved. Um, you know, posting the meetings, it would just be a lot of work for a lot of people. Uh, I have one question and I don't know if, I've read through this several times, so I don't know if I've missed it. Was there any discussion about uh these restaurants using disposable menus? Uh, and I ask that because I know that I've read some articles about this too, that one of the dirtiest things in a restaurant is the menu. Is the laminated menus, and unless they're willing to spray those down, wipe them down every single time. Is there, has there been any thought about having them print their menus up and just having a stack of those to go and they are only used once?
Yeah, so to the chair, that, that's a good question, so keep in mind that as part of this governor's uh phased uh reopening. There are industry-specific guidelines that they must meet, so the masking, the gloves, all the protocols, and I believe. Uh, I'm relying if I said I've, I've memorized every industry-specific guidance uh document issued because there. There are reams and reams of them, but if I'm not mistaken, there is one requiring paper and disposable menus if I'm not mistaken.
Could we look into that to be sure, cause that's, I think that's actually a pretty big.
Well, one of, they would either, if, if they, if they aren't using the disposal and, and I, and again, I just don't, I don't have that uh detail in front of me. Then they, they'd be required to sanitize them uh after every, after every use, just like they have to sanitize the uh, the, the seating. The stations, the chairs after, after each use, so one way or another, that is addressed.
Okay.
Close that, Leslie?
Well, I guess I'd like to be a little pushier about it.
Uh, well, I, I, I think it's certainly the case, you know, I mean, uh, with the measures that would be taken, right, to, as John just indicated, sanitize all the other things. That are in use by both the staff and the customers, um, then.
I'm being told by all my staff that is running off and Googling that paper menus are in fact required, so you're all.
There you are, yeah.
I was like ninety percent sure, but I didn't say something that I wasn't positive on, so.
Okay, I wondered why Dave was raising.
They all turned, they all turned and about four or five staff members said paper menus are required, so.
Okay, that's great, thank you, I do appreciate that information, thank you very much.
Sure.
Great. Uh, Julian, did you have a hand up also?
Yeah, I was just wondering, who is the, is going to be the staff liaison person, is it the health agent who kind of goes in and says, you're all set to go, or?
It's a, it, it's always been and will continue to be a, a staff, a group effort between police, fire, building. And health, and so that would be the intention that uh, just like when you, when you approve these at a normal meeting. They always either have already been inspected and approved by all those departments, or it would say uh, they're close, uh, but they need to finish something, so the approval would be contingent upon. Police, fire, DPW, uh, I'm sorry, DPW, uh, but, and health signing off on those, so that, that process uh wouldn't change. The difference is instead of the board signing it, I would be the one to sign it. And town council was pretty adamant that it would need to be dealt, I would need to be the one to authorize these because. The other department heads, um, you couldn't delegate to one of them because each of them has a piece, so. All this stuff comes and gets filtered through our office anyway, so we're the ones that compile it and put it together for the board's consideration. So we do that anyway, that, so in many respects, the, the process wouldn't change, the only difference is we'd be expediting it so that uh, so that we can turn these around. Uh, hopefully, uh, almost as quickly as the um businesses can get their plans and information together. Um, the staff is committed to being responsive in the spirit of cooperation to, to really try to get them uh, uh, operational as, as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve the policy on use of outdoor space for food and alcohol service during COVID-nineteen emergency. As presented by the town administrator.
Second? Moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion? John?
Uh, just a suggestion, just so this in the record, um, would you uh, might want to amend your motion to include and waive the fees. And, and waive the hundred and fifty-dollar uh application fee, just so it's in the, in the record.
Yep.
As amended, okay.
Motion as amended, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Julian.
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Von?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously.
Excellent, thank you, we're gonna have a lot of very happy uh restaurant owners tomorrow.
Yes. Prepare for a busy week.
Very good.
It will be a busy week.
As if it wasn't already busy, right, so.
Just trying to keep up with everything, that's all.
Right. Uh, next item on the agenda is letter of support for the town's fiscal year twenty-twenty-one municipal vulnerabilities preparedness MVP grant application. I believe uh Scott Chapater, DPD Director is presenting.
Yes, Mister Chair, thank you, the um. Municipal vulnerability uh preparedness grant program, we became an MVP community last year through the work of our uh working group in the community. It allows us to be eligible to submit grant applications for um action projects. Uh, the first year's application for FY twenty-one, we're seeking funding to develop a water system risk and resilience assessment. This is a, it was an unfunded mandate in two thousand and eighteen when it came out, uh, now there's a funding structure for it. So it was issued by the uh, the EPA as a requirement for drinking water systems to develop risk uh, risk assessments. The intent is to identify vulnerabilities on, in, in the system from um, uh, attacks, from uh, uh. Catastrophes relevant to natural disaster and from climate change. So Northborough's a bit unique, we're, we're all aware that Northborough receives one hundred percent of the water from the MWRA. Um, so there are certain components of um, risk that are different for our community than others. We're seeking a, a letter of support from the board, we've received letters from some of our legislative uh delegation and from some adjoining communities. In that letter, I identify a few highlights of what this assessment is gonna include. Um, my intent is never to develop a, a, a three-ring binder, throw it on a shelf and let it collect dust. Uh, my goal is to get something useful, especially for seeking grant funds, it's important that those grant funds are utilized. So a few of the things that are gonna be part of this program, um, that I think the town in Northborough is gonna, gonna reap some benefit from is one. Uh, looking into a second connection for our drinking water supply. We have a single pipe that provides all of our drinking water from the MWRA Carroll Treatment Plant in Walboro on Cedar Hill Road. Um, we have an opportunity here to assess, evaluate and model a second connection to the authority through the city of Walboro. Over by uh Solomon Pond Road and Route two ninety. It's a good location, there's two hydrants, twenty feet apart, they're painted different colors because they're owned by different communities. Uh, it would benefit both communities. That's one of the things that the MVP program looks for is a regional approach to things. Another element that I deem to be very useful to the community is an evaluation of our drinking water supply wells, which are currently inactive. And when I say evaluation, we need an evaluation on what their status is relevant to mechanical operations, chemical operations, and activation. What do we need? In the can or in the queue to bring the wells back on, 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 on feed? In the event there's an emergency, and what do we need to do as far as notification and testing? You can't just turn the well on, open the valve and hope the water's clean going on into the system. There are protocols and notifications, we need an SOP associated with that. Another thing you'll see in the, in the support letter is uh evaluating the viability of a wall wa, a raw water connection from Lyman Street. Over to Westboro, Westboro is seeking an MVP um, community designation at, right now. One of the things that they've identified to us and, and uh, through, through conversations is um, a water supply, a need for water supply. We have a, a mothballed well that has um, quality water, groundwater that is not far from Westboro's um. Uh, Chauncey well treatment location, so there's a, a interconnection possibility there that will be part of this evaluation, so. At the end of the day, you know, our, our goal is to, to um, receive an eighty-six, eighty-seven thou, funding for an eighty-seven thousand dollar project. Twenty-five percent of that is a local match, a portion of that local match, approximately seventy-five hundred dollars will be. Uh, local in-kind services, the remaining fourteen thousand will be paid for part of the operating budget. With sixty-five thousand seven hundred dollars coming through grant funds. So again, uh, I, I don't want to have a three-ring binder sit on a shelf that nobody uses. Um, there are pieces of this study that are gonna be useful to the community um, on, 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 on several levels, so. I'm asking the board for your consideration and support, to sign a letter that could be sent over to the state identifying the, the importance of this project.
Thank you very much, Scott, very uh complete presentation and the well-crafted letter, very detailed, thank you, uh, John?
Uh, just before you move to uh comments on the board, I, because I know somebody at home is gonna watch us and say, why would we, if we have a well that works, why would we be pumping water? And selling it to a neighboring community? Our wells are offline because the water that comes out of there is chemically incompatible with the MWRA's water. The iron and the manganese would fall out and basically uh, in order for us to use our wells. We would need to build a very expensive uh water treatment plant, which is not cost-effective for us. We are an MWRA community, the pipe is already here, uh frankly, it, it's the gold standard for uh, for water. Uh, it, it wins best quarter uh at, at, at a national uh, at a national uh contest all the time. Um, we don't, we don't have uh, we don't have um, uh, um. Water restriction, water bans, things of that nature, uh, because we're an MWRA community, we have been for uh, for a very long time. So the wells that we have, we would only use them in the event of an emergency, we cannot bring them back in a cost-effective way. Uh, because they're not compatible, so, so since they're there, some of the infrastructure is there, if we could, if they are useful and we could sell water to a neighboring community. Who also is using well water and it's compatible with their uh system, if it makes sense, it's something to explore. But it's not an option for us to bring these wells back online, it's, it's, it's prohibitively costly. Um, the last time we looked at it, we were looking at a water treatment plant in the order of over ten million dollars. And uh, and the payback, the plant would need to be, um, the plant would need to be refurbished and rebuilt before you hit a payback. Uh, so that's why we've stayed with the MWRA, I just don't want anybody to wonder, well, if the wells are good and the water's good, why aren't you using it? We can't because of the, the lack of compatibility chemically between the MWRA's water and our, in our well water, so. Before we get a bunch of suggestions, you know, tomorrow, I figured I, I volunteer that information.
Thank you for the clarification, right. Uh, any other questions by board members, Julian?
So, John, are you saying that if we, in an emergency, you, you know, if, if our wells were. Prepared so that in emergency we could use them, we'd have to do all wells and no MWRA because of the incompatibility?
Scott, you wanna take this one?
Yeah, in, in the event of an emergency, for example, the MWRA Carroll Treatment Plant goes down. That would be an emergency, they have a mechanic, a substantial mechanical failure and their redundancy systems cannot operate, that would be an emergency. We have, Master EP requires us to have thirty hours of water in storage and available for use. We have well, well in excess of that, we have forty-eight, I, we have close to sixty hours of water sitting in our tanks. During those sixty hours of drawdown, we need to be able to bring our, our water supply wells online. Uh, it, from, from an emergency status, so that they're pumping out portable water. The water can be treated perfectly fine out of our wells, distributed to our system, the customers will be happy with the water received. Uh, the issue comes when we have mixing of water. Though our current wells do not have adequate supply to provide every drop of water that the town needs. In the event that they were issued, uh, released in an emergency status, there would be a water restriction that goes, comes along with that. Don't water your lawns, don't wash your trucks, don't wash your cars, it's for portable water use, um, and that is a sustainable approach. Many communities have that, the vast majority of surface water supply communities have their primary reservoir and they have a secondary reservoir. Um, it's, it's not uncommon to have that, it's, it's uncomfortable to not have a firm. Uh, SOP of a standard operating procedure on how to bring those online quickly in the event of an emergency, that's what we need.
And I just want to say thank you so much for all this work and, and doing the study and um, it sounds, it sounds great, thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, any other questions? Tim uh put his hand up, but it wasn't to ask a question, so uh, do I have a motion?
You do have a motion, Mister Chairman. I move the board vote to authorize the chair to send a letter to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs in support of the town's. FY twenty-twenty-one municipal vulnerabilities preparedness grant application.
Second?
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Julian.
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye unanimously, carries. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
So, very much appreciated, um, these are the kinds of things that, uh, the kinds of details that nobody really knows or understands and uh. Uh, uh, just appreciate all the expertise that comes into play here to uh, to, to find the path through for this, so thank you.
Just something to fill my time.
He's not measuring out distance between seats.
Alright. Uh, next item on the agenda, proclamation for the graduating class of twenty-twenty. We, at the suggestion of uh Vice Chair Dawn Rand, um. Uh, we wanted to make a statement by the board uh to honor and congratulate the, the graduates of the class of twenty-twenty. As we mentioned before, that uh, this, this has been the atypical year, uh, a lot of sacrifices made in what they normally would have expected to be their senior year. Celebration uh and acknowledgement and recognition, so uh with that, Dawn, uh, if I could ask you to uh read the proclamation. Uh, you need to, I'm a. Uh, you need to unmute?
Hey, Mister Chair, the town of North, Massachusetts Board of Selected Proclamation. Whereas the month of June is traditionally the month where high school graduations occur across the nation. Whereas the high school graduating class of two thousand and twenty. Has experienced the dramatic interruption of their educational and social lives due to the COVID nineteen pan epidemic. And whereas graduating seniors at the Algonquin Regional High School and Asper Valley Regional Technical High School. Have worked hard graduate, to graduate despite the challenges of completing the school year in virtual classrooms. And whereas these young individuals have had to give up so many things made high school memorable. Sports, field trips, theatrical productions, concerts, club activities, social activities and graduation ceremonies. Whereas Northwood High School seniors have overcome their disappointments. They have just demonstrated their commitment to education and their faith in the future. And whereas the class of two thousand and twenty. Graduates deserve their achievements to be recognized by the people within their community and beyond. We now therefore proclaim the month of Ju, June, two thousand and twenty, Northborough High School Seniors Month. In the town of Northborough and be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen. That the community of Northborough honor and extend its appreciation to the high school graduating class of two thousand and twenty. Given this eighth day of June in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty, it will be signed by all five selectmen.
Thank you very much, Don, um, excellent suggestion, uh, any comments by the board members? Leslie?
First of all, I love it, um, th- this is just a grammatical issue. If you don't mind, at the very end, that the community of Northborough honors and extends. Because of, Northborough is a prepositional phrase, so Northborough honors and extends, so.
Can make that edit.
Okay. Otherwise, I think this is wonderful, I think this is a terrific document.
Great, thank you, Leslie. Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, seeing another, I'll just, I'll just say that, uh, we certainly appreciate, uh, as I mentioned before in my report, uh, all the work that's gone on for these many years, uh, for these graduates, uh, it's been a very, um, long period to get to this point, to mark this achievement and and not really be able to. Fully celebrate it in the way you would like to, um, in the company of many, you know, family members and friends in certain cases, so. We certainly appreciate and acknowledge, uh, all of that work. We congratulate the graduates and their families and, uh, we wish you all the success in the future, so. With that, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mister Chair, I move the board vote to proclaim the month of June, two thousand and twenty, Northwood High School Seniors. I'm think I'm missing some words here, Jason. And ask that the community of Northborough honor and extend its appreciation to the high school graduating class of two thousand and twenty.
Second?
Moved and seconded, uh, roll call vote, Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Leslie.
I just have a question about this, um, I'm kind of doubting that a lot of the seniors will actually. Know this is even in existence. Is there somewhere that we can post this, could it be on a, literally a photo of that document on the town website? Or I don't know if they watch the cable station, I'm kind of doubting it. But is there a place where this could be posted, because I think it's a nice.
I, I, I think it's, um, we can certainly, uh, uh, make it available, uh, uh, on the town website and we can communicate it to the, uh, regional school district as well, um, for them to use whatever communications or avenues to convey it.
On their website, maybe, okay.
Sure, yep. Uh, next item, execution of cemetery deeds, one zero nine eight, one zero nine nine, do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, one zero nine eight and one zero nine nine.
Second?
Moved and seconded, uh, roll call vote, Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
I vote aye, carries unanimously. Uh, next meeting date for the Board of Selectmen is June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, uh, that will be a week from tonight and in the interim, we will have had. The meeting of the appropriations committee to review, uh, uh, the budget as proposed in both their recommendations. Uh, the meeting for next week will be an opportunity for the Selectmen to understand the. Uh, logistics and circumstances as revised for town meeting on June twenty second. To consider what, uh, modifications might be in the structure of the warrant in terms of. Expediting, um, the treatment of the various warrant articles, uh, and also, uh, town moderator Fred George in attendance, if there's any consideration to, uh, having further postponement or delay of town meeting. So June fifteenth, twenty twenty. And any other business to come before the board?
Uh, no other business this evening, Mister Chairman.
No other business? Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mister Chair, I move we adjourn from our meeting. Second?
Moved and seconded, uh, Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much, appreciate all your work.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.